Let's stand up and say the legislature will be.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Katie, I think we have everybody here.
Yes.
I'm on your record.
The cloud.
Katie, I think you have everybody listed here. I'm ready to take minutes and we will go ahead with a statement of public hearing.
All right. The purpose of this hearing is for public review and comments regarding the proposed 2026 Village of Grafton annual program budget and related levies.
Thank you very much. In the last two years, we have had a public hearing. And then what we've done is we've gone right ahead to vote on the budget. This year it's going to change a little bit on recommendation from Paul and to maybe take a little bit of time in between when we do this. And so it doesn't have any look perhaps that we're pushing things through too quick. So we will look right here to go ahead and take any public comment. Does anybody wish to speak on the budget? For this year? Anyone?
No one has signed in.
No one has signed in. Okay, so we've given two shots here for people to speak on budget. And at this point in time, there's no one has responded, so we will close the public hearing point of this and look to the village board to see if there's any questions after Paul does his presentation.
Yep, sure. There we go. I will do.
I'm just gonna, we're not gonna close the public hearing. I apologize. Paul, go ahead and if we have any questions, we'll address those. My bad.
Yep, we're gonna do a condensed version of what was done at the workshop, seeing as except for two people who are staff. Everyone is in attendance was last time. And then little twist to it is I will try to answer the questions that came up at the workshop in this, in the presentation. We can skip that. So again, just a reminder, areas of emphasis is to continue to improve quality of life, improve efficiency and effectiveness of municipal services. Ensure stakeholders are well informed and engaged on municipal matters, ensure fiscal stability, ensure adequate infrastructure, facilities and equipment. Promote quality and sustainable economic and community development and promote a quality housing mix for Grafton's residents and Grafton's business workforce. These are the areas of emphasis that the departments look at when making budget requests. Then again, what drives the budget for the most part is state and village guidelines. Again, state law does require a hard cap on tax levy limits limited to the net new construction, which get in the village was 3.7%. Normally, we do look at the expenditure restraint program. However, since our mill rate is going to be below $5 per thousand of assessed value, we do not qualify for that program. However, when that mill rate does increase above that $5 per thousand, we will be able to get back into the program if we meet the requirement, which really is a tax rate at CPR lower. Tax rate, or I'm sorry, the CPI was 2.9%. The ERP figure would have been 5.1, which is the CPI plus 60% of our net new construction. And then we also do a fund balance target of 25%. Again, tax levy limits, state law restricts percentage increase of the village's tax levy, 3.73%, which is our net new construction. And that is what the executive 2026 budget calls for. The assessed tax rate, this is what rate is going to be on the village portion of the tax bill. You can see our recent history. Pretty flat, 22, 23, 24, 25. The reason for the increase was the referendum for the fire department out of that dollar increase for the 2025 tax levy, 99 cents of that was the referendum. And then the drop is due to the village-wide assessment, reassessment that was done this year, which increased our assessed value. And that's why we have that drop. Our fund balance goal again is to maintain 25% of expenditures as a safety net for unanticipated expenditures. And that is what's consistent with Moody's credit services recommendation for the village. The 2026 budgeted fund balance is 40% of budgeted expenditures. And again, a quick reminder, fund balance is assets minus liabilities. It is not cash. And again, considered as a rainy day fund or emergency reserves. And the best practice would be to use them or use fund balance for a one-time expenditure or expenditures that do not increase recurring operating costs that cannot be funded through current revenue. So for example, using fund balance for wages and benefits would not be sustainable. It would not be a recommendation. Another good use of fund balance would be if you're doing a startup for a new program, just to get it off and getting on the ground. And here is a history of the targeted fund balance with the actual fund balance. You can see the village is consistently above that level of 25%. And then here, the budget does call for use of about 1.23 million dollars of fund balance, as you can see here for our history. The orange is the actual gain use of or use of fund balance and the blue is the budgeted use of fund balance. So you can see over the last roughly 13 years, we have identified for the budget process utilizing 8.7 million dollars of fund balance in actuality over that same time period. Our general fund fund balance has increased by 1.5 million. Again, usually what that occurs is people retiring, open positions. Usually on the revenue side, it would be because of an increase of a budgeted permitting revenue and also interest income. We budget very conservatively on the revenue side. And then this question came up last time, so I added a chart. General fund balance is a percentage of expenditures. So you can see the bar is what our fund balance was at the end of the year. It aligns with the left side. And then the line is where the percentage of expenditures have been over that time. So you can see we've been consistently since 2014 above 35%. Lisa did ask last time, when was the highest? It was actually last year. We were at the highest. This was an attempt to kind of give an idea of fund balance. Use, so we're identifying about 1.2 million dollars of use of fund balance. We know we budget on the conservative side of revenues. The Aurora addition is not included with the revenues right now in the budget, in the building permit. We estimate those, that permit to revenue to be about 125,000. So again, that's not reflected in the budget, assuming everything else goes as forward. One-time expenditures, village hall updates, the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, stormwater pipe repair, flip plane review, and four versus two every even year, we have four elections scheduled, odd years, we have two, that would be an acceptable use of fund balance, roughly 20,000 every other year. And then so they back that out. I didn't finish that up, but it comes down to about 875, 880,000. And then as we are aware, we also have the fire department tax levy not settled. That could change. And then we could always reduce tax levy from other funds. That really leaves about $880,000 that isn't applied. And just remember that 70% of our general fund revenue is our general fund expenditures are wages and benefits. So again, we try not to use too much fund balance or apply an excessive amount of fund balance when we're balancing out the budget. But again, as you see from this slide, that has not necessarily been an issue, but we would look at if it was 1.2 million dollars and we utilized half of that or more, let's say we use 700,000 dollars of fund balance and we went into the 2027 budget, identifying another 1.2 million dollars of use of fund balance for budgeting purposes, then we would have a different discussion. We would have to look at maybe services or where we could, what we could do to reduce expenditures. So just again, good for now, but it's something to be aware of that could impact us later. Here's the the budget facts for the general fund. And I'm sorry, this is the tax levy. So you can see over time or last year to this year, general fund is actually having a reduction in tax levy application. Library is getting $10,000. Park and open space fund is getting an additional 92,000. And again, that's for a purchase of a bigger item. We'll talk about that a little bit later. Currently, the Ozaki Central Fire is $360,000. Debt service is flat. Capital projects, we're adding some tax levy to fund some of those projects and then capital improvements, which is really capital equipment, we're reducing that slightly. And then as you can see on the expenditure side, this is overall budget. Again, general, these are the funds that are tax levy supported. Majority of them, you know, general fund, which is village hall, police, parks and rec, Department of Public Works. Increase for all those departments is 1.5%. Library a quarter of a percent, park and open space fund. Again, that is related to one time. I should say one time, a replacement of a larger piece of playground equipment. The fire department and then debt service overall expenditures are going up. However, that is TID related, so there's no impact on tax levy. The TIDS repay that debt service. Capital projects is the significant increase as we are proposing doing, I didn't get the miles of roads, but I think it's close to two miles of roads, but borrowing for those and the capital improvements, capital equipment, a decrease, and we'll talk about that when it gets to the capital equipment page. And then on the tax levy side, again, this is what people really I think care about. What is the tax rate? You can see it is $4, $4.94 per thousand of assessed value or a decrease of roughly 30%. Tax levy again, that's the maximum of my law, 392,000. And then we were having, per the assessor, we had a increase in assessed value because of the revaluation of roughly 48%. This is just a graph of where a property tax levy goes. As you can see, the bigger portion is general fund that has pretty much maintained the same level over the last five years. Special revenue fund has seen an increase. And again, that is due to the Ozaki Central Fire Department. The referendum that was approved by the voters. Debt service stays relatively flat. And capital improvement fund is a little bit lower, but again, that's because we are proposing borrowing for roads, not tax levying. So general fund budget, the departments came through, they didn't really ask for a lot of extra. There were no personnel changes requests for the 2026 budget. The general fund does include the 3% wage adjustment approved by their trustees as a result of the compensation study. We are budgeting, a reminder, we budget permit revenue and interest earnings conservatively. And this also includes all the obligatory contractual increases, the garbage recycling contracts, software licenses, website hosting. And we also have included one-time projects that we identified earlier. I mean, the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, flood plan review project and maintenance projects at village hall. And this again shows where the general fund revenues come from. 55% taxes, another 13% is intergovernmental. Those are our two big pieces. After that would be application of fund balance, which we hope it will not be that 11%. And then the rest is licensed permits, interest income, charges for services, intergovernmental charges, other financing sources, fines, forfeitures, forfeitures and miscellaneous revenues. Again, here's summary. You can see year to year, it's fairly flat. The big increase again is the applied fund balance. Last year we applied 750. And for 2026, we're identifying 1.2 million. And again, the general fund revenue changes, major changes comparing 25 budget to 26, reduction of property taxes, reduction in charges for services mainly related to Ozaki Central as the village will only be doing or providing payroll and HR services, will not be providing financial services support to other OCFD next year. And again, an increase from 2025 budget to 2026 budget about $482,000 of fund balance. And again, mentioned this already, but you know, those, those projects identified are one-time projects, which is a acceptable use of fund balance. On the expenditure side, 75% of our general fund expenditures are public safety and public works related. And that's typical of most governments in state of Wisconsin. General government's the next piece. After that, community regimen services, which is parks and rec, conservation development, which is planning and unclassified. Again, expenditure summary, general fund or general government, slight increase from year to year, the public works is actually a decrease. And then the big change in unclassified is the fact that normally we will place funds in a wage reserve. And then during the year in 2026, we would move those after the board approves a wage adjustment and apply merit, since we know the 3% has been approved by the board already for 2026, those have been placed directly into the program area. So we do have a small amount, smaller amount than normal in unclassified wages are for merit. That's why there's a decrease there. On the general fund expenditure side, wages benefits, 298, $1,000 increase. Bid repairs removed from 2025 to 2026, but that actually we're moving that over to capital projects fund, road maintenance reduction. Again, decrease in the wage adjustment reserve, as I just mentioned. There's additional support for recreation and aquatics funds. Those funds in a perfect world would be self-supporting. However, any deficit, we do transfer funds to the general fund to support those two funds. So every year, those two funds close with a zero balance. And we have village hall updates, the comprehensive outdoor recreation plans, stormwater pipe repair, flip plane review. Now, again, mentioned this last time, but since the village is responsible for repairs and maintenance, some repairs and maintenance at the fire station, we created a department for that as well as the Timothy Woodin Building. And then again, elections, we have four versus two in 26 compared to 25. And then we actually decided to, as we talked internally, we consolidated information technology to a separate department. So we moved items that were, or in the past have been assigned or split between multiple departments. We're just putting it in that IT to get a better handle of tracking that. And that includes phones. And again, I think I mentioned this last time. Village Hall will process the payments. But each department is still responsible for their contracts and selecting who they're going to be using. But as we learn more, as it's in-house, we'll review that and maybe over time that will change. But again, that's, that was roughly $125,000. But again, that was just moving it from departments to this department, no increase to the bottom line. Fire protection rescue services, the major changes were the property tax levy increase request and wages benefit increase, which does include three new firefighters. A park and open space fund, we did increase the property tax levy due to a significant project, which is the replacement of the Limekill and Play structure. The park and recreational facilities fund, which is collection of impact fees that are budgeted, that are applied to new parks and new recreation facilities. Just because there's less activity, we're going to be bringing in less revenue, anticipated to bring in less revenue. And the big expense out of that will be the purchase of parkland for the Hawksbridge Landing, which earlier this year, the agreement was, I think it's, I forget, five acres, I think is the size of the park. But what we're, how we're going to fund this is a maximum of 50% of the remaining fund balance will be paid out to the, to who we settle to. And I don't think because I'm not directly involved with it and Mark is here. I don't know. Are you involved with that? The probably not.
You're getting up to speed.
Yeah, okay. I don't think there's been a final determination. It will come to the board to determine the cost per acre, but if it comes out to, let's say, $100,000 an acre and there's five acres and we have $200,000 of fund balance that we can play, pay, we would buy two acres. So it will be over time potentially that the acreage will be purchased with the anticipation that that park and rec facilities fund will increase as development occurs. And then in the future, we'll, a park similar somewhat to the Riverbend Park will be developed. But it's going to be a bigger park. Library fund. Added increase in property tax levy of $10,000 will go more once. Since this is the first year without the town, we don't really know where that's going to end up. We just felt comfortable giving them a little bit more money. Because we don't know what amount is going to be coming from the, from the county for non-village checkouts. And overall, the decrease in expenditures and capital base for the library fund was $2,000. Then they also have the library donor fund. Again, that was money that was given to the library for specific purposes from for mainly for larger capital projects. So next year, they're planning on replacing the shelving at a cost of $315,000. At the end of the year, it's projected that they would still have $480,000 of fund balance for future projects. And then the remaining funds, no material changes, room tax, revolve loan, Woodlawn Cemetery Capital, Recreation Aquatics and the Environmental Fund. And just as a reminder, because these funds dropped off, all the ARPA funds were fully expended. So there is no budget for 2026. Debt service fund, there is no tax levy change. There is a large increase from the transfer from TID number four, a decrease for TID number three. And again, the TID debt is paid directly by the increment that is generated by each TID. We're transferring less money from impact fee funds. The impact fee fund is a fund where we collect for the public works department or public works building and police station. Public Works Building, we have completed 100% of the state allowable impact fees that we can collect for that. So that has ended. But we utilize the impact fee fund to offset tax levy for paying debt service. Then on the expenditure side, $444,000 of general debt decrease. And then again, the TID number four debt increase and the TID number three debt decrease. And then just a comparison, tax rate next year, 15 cents per thousand compared to 22 cents this year. We are limited to 5% of equalized value, which would be we have an available capacity of another $80 million. Currently, our outstanding debt at the end of this year will be about $27 million. And again, 2026 budget proposes issuance of debt for road projects, dam repairs and utility infrastructure. Against proposal, as we go through the year, there's multiple steps that would have to come through the board before we actually borrow. Impact fee fund, again, decrease of impact fees, mentioned that the MSF fee was collected. Capital projects, we're looking at $150,000 increase of general property tax levy. Borrowing geodet roughly $2.7 million, which would be for a street reconstruction and the dam repairs that are mandated by the Wisconsin DNR. And again, to get an idea of where the road replacement is scheduled. I think that would written out somewhere here. So it's Ninth Avenue to Cedar Creek over to Power, over to Eighth and then Eighth down Power to North and then back to Ninth. And it does include Overland Court. Okay, capital equipment fund. So we have the purchases, the enterprise lease for the squads. In 2026, all the squads will be now included with that enterprise lease program. 75,000 for an excavator, which is being split with the utilities. So the utility has an identical $75,000 expenditure in their budget. The police department HVAC upgrade roughly 65,000, street sweeper lease 60,000. And the village hall HVAC replacement at 25,000. And again, as I mentioned last time, there was changes that we're allocating a set tax levy for public police and public works equipment, offsetting it by any grants, vehicle equipment sales. And then as a request expenditures, they'll be able to roll over funds year to year. So for example, the reason we lease the street sweeper is to level out that $60,000 over four years instead of spending $240,000 or $250,000 in one year. So the DPW will be able to bank, whoops, wrong way, will be able to bank that money that is unspent between years to purchase larger pieces of equipment. And then we're not impacting and having peaks and valleys in tax levy. There were two changes that I did send. I should have probably mentioned at the beginning. One was capital equipment and it kind of shows when there aren't department heads, it kind of leads to issues, but requested in the budget submitted by the department. They did not include the body of the dump truck that was purchased in 2024. There was a delay. We received that body. So we went it through and this impacts 2025 only. So we have the body in 2025. So actually that public works number is decreased by about 140,000 because that's the cost of the body. Again, Goldberg property. Big three and a half thousand dollars of TIP increments is anticipated again. As a reminder, across the village, 25 construction is recognized on January 1 of '26, which means it would impact our '27 budget. So there's always a there is that lag in being able to capture any increases. And right now, the expenditure, which is an update slide, it's the asbestos abatement and tearing down, the teardown is all in that $694,000. And then there's additional 9,000, I think of nine or $11,000 to put up fencing to try to keep people out of that area. And again, I believe that information will be sent to the board next year as we go through the process. So there'll be a couple of steps to approve various aspects of the Goldberg property abatement and development. And then proprietary funds, which is our water and wastewater, we're anticipating a increase in the water operating revenues. We just had a rate increase for that wastewater operating revenues. And there was a 6% increase over the summer. Combined operating expenditures are decreasing and the capital contributions are also decreasing, which is reflects the board accepted water main, sewer main hydrant that are constructed as part of developments. And eventually they have to be accepted by the board. Then at that point, the utility is responsible for maintenance. The fund or the big capital projects for the proprietary funds is $3.2 million of made replacement. 496,000 for the Ninth Avenue Lift Station upgrades. 275,000 for the South Clarify Rehab. And then the AMI meter conversion, I believe there's one more year after this. But then we'll have all AMI meters in residences. So how does this all work for an allocation of an average residential tax bill? So for the assessor in 2020 five, the average assessed value of a property is $419,000, which would be quit out to a $2,070 bill from the, for the village taxes only. And you can see there how it's broken out. Again, most of it's general fund, the fire EMS or OCFD, capital projects, library, debt service, recreation and park and open space. And the border review has been done. We did get numbers. We're still working through the county to get the finals, but that has been impacted in here. There was a change. There was no change to the assessed tax levy. There was no change to the assess tax levy, but there was a doubt, a a one penny decrease to the equalized. Um from that from the final border review changes. Um again, final funding of OCFD has not been finalized. Um I can. Explain options for that. Um I said, I think we're done. And okay, we could talk about that now. Um. So. I believe we're going to maximize the state allowable tax levy. So um that will not change. So an option that that the board could undertake is. Um at the November tenth special meeting to add on the approval of. Uh the tax levy allocation and funding of the various funds and setting the tax rate. Um and then as we go through the rest of the month. Uh if OCFD comes through with a lower amount. That amount can still be. Reserved or tax levy that's collected can either stay in that OCFD to potentially alleviate future increases. Um or. We can come, the staff can come back to the board and request to. Transfer some of that that money back to the general fund to reduce that use of of fund balance, but. Based on where we're at now, December first, from internal staff. Standpoint is just too too much of a time crunch to get tax bills out and printed, uh because they have to be out by state law by by the third Monday in December. Um so that that is an option is we could meet. Or we we could add a special to the to the board meeting next Monday night to approve the. Tax levy and the budget. But again, that's at the discretion of the board. You know, any questions?
Ask anybody in the audience, because we're still in um open hearing. Um Marie, do you have any questions about this? Anything at all, any comments?
No.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, and so this time we're really gonna close public uh comment on this. And we'll throw it all to the board. Any final questions or clarifications um from anybody on board? Good. So uh as Paul said, um you know, again. Uh if we can um consensus here with everybody be okay with. Uh going for the formal budget adoption uh next Monday on the tenth for a special meeting.
Good, good, yes. Is there an option to do it tonight, seeing as I have no question?
It's it's not posted. We weren't sure what to do, so we decided at the time that we. Yep, thank you.
Okay. Then uh we will proceed to um do the formal budget adoption on November tenth, the meeting that starts at four thirty. All right, thank you very much, Paul. Greatly appreciate it. Uh we'll move on to uh the minutes. Uh I'll look for a motion and a second to approve the October twentieth, twenty twenty five Village Board Meeting. The October twentieth, twenty twenty five Committee of the Whole. And the October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five Special Village Board. Also to file the September twenty third, twenty twenty five Planning Commission, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five Parks and Recreation Board Minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Dave and Kevin, thank you very much. Any changes uh on the Village Board Committee of the Whole or Special Village Board even? Seeing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries. Next, anybody wish to speak on an item that uh would be um of interest to the Village Board? Anyone? Okay, uh this is presented by the president. Uh the business has been presented in the normal fashion. I have nothing else to add. Let's go to resolution ordinances and action items payment to the Village of Softville for inspections. All right, so with that, um there was an error in calculation for the bill billable amount for inspection services worked with discovered by the Village of Softville staff. And reviewed and confirmed by the Village of Grafton staff. Um there was an error in calculation of billable amount. And uh we look for a motion to bring to the table for discussion. A motion to approve the payment in the amount of a hundred eighty seven thousand five hundred thirty five dollars and fifty nine cent. To the Village of Softville for overbuild amounts related to the contract for providing inspection services.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Lisa and Dave. Your first shot on this. Any questions at all, Lisa?
Uh no, I I think, you know, just similar to the points I brought up last time, well, um. You know, it was an oversight or it was, you know, trying to get the work done behind the scenes, but. To come to the village board next time so that we could understand the problem and I'd be safe. It was just a mistake, so.
We thank you very much, Dave.
I have nothing.
Well, anybody else wish to come on this?
Yep.
Uh Andy?
Um is it because of the billing error occurred over roughly a six year period, correct?
Uh five, five and a half, yeah.
Is there the possibility of of negotiating with the Village of Softville? That we make payments to them, like for example, one third, one third, one third over the coming years, so it is not a large hit? Does that do nothing for us?
Well, I mean, we could, and they did offer that. I just told them since there was an error that we, you know, I would recommend that we pay them and one lump sum we do have. Um. You know, again, this double it sore, but we do have four point four million dollars of fund balance, so it's not gonna be a significant increase. You know, we would reduce the twenty twenty five revenue and then um the remainder would go against contingency or.
And I don't think the village asked for present value of dollars either, did they?
No, they did not.
So so is there is there something that goes back and adjusts in our other budgets in years past to correct them or?
No.
Just because. We believe that calculation to be correct at the time, it just moves forward and then those corrections in this.
Correct. We have reviewed this auditors and proposed journal entries and they agreed with the proposed journal entries.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Lisa?
And uh and the changes that we got in the email from Clint. Um the information that we received, it looks like there's been some changes and how the money is accepted. Here at the village and then also at Softville.
Correct, there were. If I'm getting too into it, there were two levels, the credit cards that we collect through our system, the cash and the and the checks that they receive. Different percentages that unfortunately was not caught at the beginning. Um in order, we decided to eliminate steps and have the village collect everything. And then at the end of the month, we will return forty percent of those revenues to. The uh Village of Softville and add in the seven hundred dollar adven fee. So it'll just be cleaner, less math. Um again, we finance bills based on what we receive. We don't always. Verify, so this will eliminate some steps. And the Village of Softville is in agreement with it, with that with that plan.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh good questions. Anybody else? Here. Your motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of both, that motion carries. Uh next item on the agenda is the negotiated um. Settlement with the Town of uh Grafton. Um and uh. The joint agreement required that the village make a payment of fifteen percent to collect the materials value. Um the analysis was completed by the previous village administrator, who determined the value to collection was seventy seven thousand dollars. A check for um eleven thousand five hundred seventy eight, fifteen percent of the value was issued to the town of Grafton. It came out to roughly about twenty cents a book. Um and you know, in some discussions with uh as as we got through this. We had some uh challenges uh with determining that value when working together with my program and with uh Paul. Um we kind of talked with the uh town supervisor, I talked with the town supervisor. Uh see if we could negotiate this without paying further legal bills. Uh trying to negotiate this, because we were definitely at um at two months of the spectrum here. So uh again, the eleven thousand was paid for or the eleven five was paid for uh. Uh without village board action and of course, um it was my understanding that if that took place through. Our village administrator, we could approve an additional eight thousand four hundred dollars, but I was in Araton. And uh for that, I'm coming to the board to say, uh if it. What guidance we would like to hear from the village board regarding this matter, would you like to have action on that this evening? To approve the twenty thousand dollars or would you like to go back and renegotiate with the town? Open question.
I'll start if that's okay. Um the first thing, the first point I want to bring up so that everyone understands, I'm on the library board. And I do have the town and those library agreement in my hand will hand here. Uh the collection materials that they speak of here are only books and periodicals. They are not anything else that's at the library, so. No DVDs, no CDs, no library of things, no telescopes, no computers, none of that stuff. It's just the books on the shelf. And periodicals, so that's magazines and newspapers. Um so that value, collection material value was come up. With a number and that was based on. Used book sales that the friends of the library have had in the past. So as soon as the library buys a book, a book for twenty dollars. First person checks it out. You and I know it's just like buying a car. Now it is not worth twenty dollars. It is now worth about like two dollars, because somebody. Ran their fingers through the pages. So that's where that number comes from. And the fifteen percent value is exactly what is required. Payment by the Village of Grafton to the Town of Grafton if the library uh agreement dissolves. So. Um my feeling about this is if the town of Grafton feels that that computation is an error. Perhaps the town of Grafton should hire an appraiser. And they could go to the library and appraise the collection and come up with a number that they think is the value of the books. And what fifteen percent of that is. And then from there, we can negotiate a number, but not knowing what they think the number is. Well, I think my car is worth thirty thousand dollars, but the insurance company feels it's only worth three. So I don't agree with the uh the town saying, we don't think that's enough. So I feel like if they don't feel that that's enough, they should have to hire an appraiser and come back to us with a different number. And then we as the Village of Grafton can determine. Uh maybe negotiate with them as to what they actually think, without not having an actual hard number of what they think it's worth. I'm I'm not there.
Lisa?
Um I I I agree with Andy, um. Although I do have some other points. Um. The value of the books, the periodicals were determined from the library director. Per the email that we got from um the past administrator. And this is from a letter that um he sent and we saw before it was sent to the town of Grafton. So it it was all here. We all know that we had a closed session and we discussed it in closed session. That was the number. And that was in July. And this letter was sent out on July second, and here it is November, and we're hearing from the town. That's not good enough, or October, whenever it happened. Um I wonder when they cash the check.
Oh, baby, let me help to comment on that. They have returned since returned the check to us.
The first check?
Yes, yes. That check has been returned, was returned on Monday.
The eleven thousand dollar check, so they never cashed it?
They did, correct.
Okay, um so. Again, this is something that. You know, we're just hearing about. Um they could have contacted us sooner. Here we are at the end of the year. We're trying to negotiate other agreements with the town. Um and it's it as far as I'm concerned, it's too late now. It's too late. We got an accurate number from the library director that was given to the administrator. That information was given to the town on July second. And um as far as I'm concerned, there there should be no additional payment.
Thank you, Lisa. Anybody else wish to comment?
Yeah, um I want to echo what Andy said about uh i- i- if the town. Need wanted to get a a different number, they should have a reevaluation of the materials that were being uh. Part of this collection. It does seem a little bit arbitrary where they are just throwing out twenty thousand dollars, and I'm a little concerned that. Um we're getting taken for a little bit of a ride because of that.
Sure.
Yeah, that was gonna be one of my questions was has this eleven thousand five hundred seventy dollar check been cashed? Um. It's concerning for me as a taxpayer to hear that. Um you know, there's there's a math formula to the cost and the value of the periodicals within the building. We we followed the formula. We had a full discussion in possession. It it it's strictly arithmetic, right? The fifteen percent of the value. Um and to have the town all of a sudden say, well, no, that the math isn't mapping for us and the numbers. This 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 monetary amount isn't isn't good enough for the payout. Um that's just not. How finances amongst municipalities work. Uh and. It we also to kind of give us some background information on this event. Um was sent an email from uh our interim village administrator, uh Clint Ridley. And it's stated in there um how. You know, once the town came back to the village and said, hey, look, you know, this, we're not agreeing upon upon this number. There was some discussion amongst our village president with um the town president and. They came to this. Discussion agreement of twenty thousand dollars for payment, which is now being brought to our board for consideration. Um that to me seems like an overreach in power to have a discussion about, you know. What one municipality should pay another municipality and just kind of. Say, well, you know what? Let's just throw out a number there and I'll bring it back to the board. Um that's. Very concerning for me as a trustee and a taxpayer in this area. Um again, so I'm going to also. Um. Echo what trustee Schwartz said, if our town has an issue with the math, then they can hire someone. Right, an accountant to do the math and come back with a. An actual written down, right, formula saying, here's where we got to the twenty thousand dollar number. Because otherwise, it's just a bunch of hearsay that we should not have to pay for, and I will not be voting for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Well, um the information that Andy has brought here tonight, uh just to kind of shed the light on what's going on here. And um. That's what I guess that was a fair number that was put out there. And then for them to ask for an additional seventy five percent of that. Um kind of changed my mind now from, like I say, with the information and the comments that have been made here today.
Very good. So um Clint?
If I could, I I have no involvement or stake in this, but I just think as a board, you want to hear point counterpoint. So let me just throw out a couple of things we could think about. It it may not uh sway what you want to do, but. First of all, you know, there is a man, there's an aspect of. Uh managing an issue. So sometimes you do reach negotiations. And while it's not your first number. You realize the time and the effort and further costs is. If you can arrive at a counterproposal that. Is reasonable, you you often go there. So that's just kind of point number one is. I understand how you feel about the original number. And methodology, but sometimes we think about time. Effort, big picture, you arrive at a settlement debt is neither what the other party wants. Or what the pain party wants, but it does settle the issue. The second thing, appraisals cut both ways. So. If there is an appraisal, the value comes out more than twenty. Um what do you do then? And then what is the process by which you move forward if they have an appraisal? Do we then have an appraisal? And how do you negotiate between the appraisal? So I I just want to make sure. And and I got a little bit of sentiment on on the power of this issue, but you think through. Time and effort and and risk of an appraisal, risk of a new number. How do you resolve that new number? How do you move forward as two communities that have gone different directions on this? What is worth your time, your effort, staff's time, staff's effort, legal, political churn, all all these things? And then maybe the last point I'll make is that. You know, as staff members and as board members, sometimes we do negotiate in good faith for our communities and. You do the best you can and you arrive at conclusions. And so. If there was a good faith negotiations and in arrival. Do you, even if it maybe isn't your number, do you honor those discussions and do you honor those agreements? I understand that this issue has been super thorny uh on both sides for a while, so. I I just wanted to give you something to think about. Again, I haven't been involved. I have no stake in this. Other than to make sure as a board, you're weighing all all sides of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I what the town initially came to the fact that they um. Weren't agreeing. That the eleven thousand was fair and are disagreeing. And they came forward with a figure that was that came through our legal team. For twenty five thousand dollars. Um that was the. Dollar amount that they came to. How they came to that, I don't know. However, I think we specifically went in this fairly low. And um so that is one of the reasons why uh the town chairman and I had a discussion, so we could limit our. Additional need to involve legal aspect um to be able to spend quite a bit of dollars on legal to negotiate this. So certainly if the village board doesn't want to go through with this, that's fine with me. Uh we can certainly stick to the. So certainly if the village board doesn't want to go through with this, that's fine with me. Uh we can certainly stick to the um eleven thousand. Plus uh figure, um consensus on that and we'll get a motion. Um everybody want to stick with the. Of eleven thousand five hundred seventy thousand fifty four cents.
Yes.
Yes, for now.
Yes.
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 Okay, so I'll take a motion. Uh I think what we'll do is we'll take a motion here to uh reaffirm. Uh the village's standpoint on there, which would be uh uh payment of eleven thousand five hundred seventy eight dollars and fifty four cents. Fifteen percent of the value uh uh for the uh buyer of the books. We'll promote it in a second. Katie, does that sound good? Motion second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Uh Katie, let's go to a approval of the amended agreement as provided by the Midmorean Municipal. Uh looks like this is uh pretty much just an addition of two additional um uh two additional municipalities. And some changes to the verbiage, right?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Um to bring this to the table for discussion, I'll look for a motion and a second to um approve this agreement.
Motion approved. I'll second it.
Alright, motion and second, discussion. Starting this, anything?
Uh my only question for clerk is uh is it mainly because of the town of Freedonia is joining it because they basically have to. Re-up the agreement when they get a new members and and then they're essentially making other changes to it, make it easier.
Yeah.
And the city of Chaboy, this office is joining this one, so.
Trustee Harbeck.
Um my question is, since uh Jesse left, I believe he was our representative. Do we have anybody in the interim or are we just waiting until we get an administrator?
I believe we're just waiting until we get a new administrator.
Okay, and it's always the administrator and the Sony?
I believe so. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, last time there was a gap, I I was the rep. So, not that I want to be at this time, but just saying.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further questions? We have a motion in second, all in favor to approve the amendment agreement as provided by Midmorean Municipal Court. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh let's go to the next discussion here, um which is. Action on a claim submitted by Murphy Sanchez and PPLC. Uh and uh we're looking to recommend that the village board take action to disallow the claim as presented. And direct the village clerk to serve notice of disallowance on the claimant. Sounds like this is much like we had in the past here where somebody has made a claim. Against the village and the village would deny this and then subpetition would take place.
Yeah.
Okay. So um we'll look for a motion in a second to bring to the table for discussion. Recommending the village board take action to disallow the claim as presented and direct the village clerk to serve notice of disallowance on the claimant.
Motion. I'll second it.
Alright. Andy and Dave again, very good. Any questions at all? Question? No. Anybody else here? Um trustee Harbeck?
Um the only thing I would have liked to have seen was the email. Um there was an email from. The law firm. Oh, okay.
I don't know if that was included on the packet or not.
It was not.
Okay.
It wasn't.
That you're not missing anything, but.
Okay, and so I just want to understand. So this um puts us out of. Out of the limelight of being responsible and and it it allows them to go after the contractor?
No, it it still allows them to take legal action against the village, but they have now a six month time limit in which to do so. Should they choose to do so?
Further questions? Alright, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now it's on to a report of the planning commission, approval of a resolution for the Glenstonewell Farm Con- Condominiums. Addendum number five for phase six. Um this is just a continuation of what we've had. Um with uh how the Glenstonewell Farms, I'll need a motion in a second um. For this, so we can bring this to the table for discussion.
I'll make a motion. Not second.
Sarah and Lisa, questions on this? Anybody else have questions? Looks like you're off the hook tonight. Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alright, let's go to reported Parks and Recreation Board. Uh looks like uh Amrap is wanting to give us a check for a thousand dollars. And we would like to have a motion to accept a thousand dollar donation from Amrap Method LLC be approved for the. Uh to the parks and recreation development. We'll promote it in a second.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Dave and Andy again, very good. Um any discussion on this? Uh any uh questions for chapter? Alright, looks like um no. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Let's go to um, I hear Clint has a report today.
You.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a few items for you. Uh we have some meetings coming up. Uh we do have a special village board meeting on November tenth. That'll start at four thirty PM. The Board of Public Works will also be meeting on November tenth at seven PM. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting on November eleventh at six PM and the Architecture Board on November twelve at six PM. Regarding, excuse me, Thirteenth Avenue and Highway sixty project, the right. Turn only delineators were installed last week. As a reminder, the delineators prevent left turns from Southbound Thirteenth Avenue. On Highway sixty. It also prohibits left turns from Eastbound sixty to Northbound Thirteenth Avenue. Letter to all adjacent businesses was delivered before any construction of the delineators were done. The village engineers already began to receive comments about the change and is communicating to those interested in this traffic chain, so. It's been so far well received.
Clint, just a reminder, these these you gotta get close to them to be.
Okay.
Sorry for the time.
You gotta eat the microphone, right? In terms of parks and recreation, we have the Black Hawk Trail Project that was completed on October thirtieth and is now open. Path connects the Black Hawk and the Blue Stun subdivisions. And then secondly, the dumpster enclosure project. Uh at the Limekill Park is now completed as of Friday, October thirty first. In terms of the Grafton Police Department, they've launched two community focused holiday programs. The first is called the Holiday Season Package Program, which goes from November first to January first. Residents can have online orders shipped directly to the police department at nineteen eighty one Washington Avenue to prevent package theft. Pickup is available eight AM to nine PM daily with ID. Participants are encouraged to donate canned food and or unwrapped toys which go to local charities. Secondly, there is parking ticket forgiveness program from December first to January fifteenth. Winter parking tickets are reduced by fifty percent with remaining balances payable through food donations of April value. All donations benefit the family sharing of Ozaki County. The deadline to participate is January twenty second, twenty twenty six. Both programs aim to strengthen community engagement while supporting local families in need during the holiday season. For the Ozaki uh Central Fire Department, we've had a couple of significant calls. We've had a few unfortunate uh overdoses or treatments were provided with positive outcomes. The OCFD responded to a patient with multiple gunshot wounds or required extensive and challenging delivery of UMS skills. Positive life outcome, I think we all know about that situation. The OCFD responded to a vehicle accident involving a customer being struck. And fatally injured in a business parking lot that also has been very public, very sad situation. While leaving the hospital, the OCFD was called for a resident that fell from the roof requiring extensive medical care and transport. Department continues to see a trend of paid on call members resigning or responding less often. And this is affecting their ability to staff apparatus or second or third ambulance when needed. So that is the staffing situation that they're dealing with. The Grafton Station Door Access Automatic Door Locking and Opening System update has started with a completion expected by Midbon. And then lastly, the Grafton Station Fire Line update has also begun with a late month completion expected. That's my report.
Thank you. Um it's brought to my attention. It's a great time to talk to Katie. I have Katie to say a little something about resolutions. Um uh we have done some research on resolutions and Katie.
Okay. Is that working? Okay. Um so in reading Robert's rules, it says that resolutions can either be. You can either make a motion for a resolution or offer. This thing really doesn't work. Or you can offer a resolution. When you offer a resolution, that is. Um for the purpose of reading the resolution and if you're bringing it to the board, if it is not already. Part of the packet and has not been presented beforehand. So that's when you offer a resolution. Um so we are going to discontinue the use of um making an offer for a resolution and we're just going to make it a motion in a second. Um because it's not needed, because we don't bring resolutions without prenotice to the board, so. I just want to clarify.
Thank you very much, Katie. So when I miss a uh when I miss an offer now, I can say, but we've got a motion in a second now. No, I won't. I won't do that answer. Also nice, because we don't have to have an offer motion in second for presentations. We can just do a motion in the second.
So it makes everything uniform across.
It's going to make these meetings go so much quicker, Katie. Alright, uh lastly, uh we'll look for a motion in a second to approve uh the village expenditures of five hundred seventy seven thousand. Six hundred twenty six uh dollars and twenty eight cents.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave and Kevin. And we did see, uh want to thank trustee Harbeck for really going through the, really going through the question or the uh. Uh the expenditures, coming up with some great questions. Sure, we all have those on our mind. So are there any other questions on the expenditures? Alright, oh and also thank you for getting those done by um Monday morning, so we can get a quick response to them. So we really appreciate that. So a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Let's pro uh motion to which room?
Make a motion.
Second.
Dave and Andy again?
Actually.
Going for another uh another medal here, Andy. Alright, motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and we are recessed. Thank you very much.